Good evening, everyone. Welcome to, I'd like to call it the regular meeting of the Board of Education for the District of North Fond du Lac Board of Education to order. And I'd like to start with a roll call, one please.
Chisholm.
Yes.
Bobaski, yes, hi.
Yes.
Streeter.
All right, thank you. And we have your board. Board of Public Notice, please.
Your best. Our agendas were posted at the US Bank, at the district offices, and also at the village municipal offices, as well as sent to via email and regular mail to the Fond du Lac reporter, KFIZ 107.1, and WFDL News on Friday, January 20th, 2017.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Minutes of the last meeting were distributed as part of your member packet. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes that were presented? Seeing none, they'll stand approved as presented. Treasures reported.
I can do that since Mr. Streeter will be a little late. So cash, so first off, we'll get cash on hand and assets, December 19th, 2016, $183,250.45. Total receipts for that month, for the month are $1,319,504.21. Expenditures were $1,303,791, or $91.13, with the remainder cash balance on hand of Bills are recommended of the tax list to be paid of $126,14.26 at this time.
All right, thank you. Any members have any questions on the expenses that were posted as part of the members' package? I just have one, and I haven't seen it this year. We used to see quite a few expenses for technology repair. Is that all being handled now with, by Doug?
Kind of. So what happens is Doug, there's a budget where he does buy motherboard in different parts for Chromebooks. We did, we don't, we're not sending as many iPads out. The new iPads and covers are working pretty well. We haven't had many iPad problems. But otherwise, Doug's team has kept up with things quite well. How I, Mr. Forsyth walks in. I would say, I would say overall, our Chromebooks, we did with the newer, the sophomore, junior, and senior Chromebooks, there are some issues. I'm sure that Paige could tell you that they didn't all work as well, but they're doing fine now. But overall, I think we've had really good success with our technology, knock on wood. Plus, our investment in Peter Vane. He's working about, oh, 20 hours a week. He's been doing a really great job helping us out and doing a lot of the fixing maybe without having to invest more time. Doug, would you say anything about the computer repair? Are we about on track? Less repairs this year? Are you guys more efficient? What would you say?
It's been about the same. I don't think we've seen as many motherboard issues as we have in the past. And screen breakage is about the same as it's been. So it's, I'd say it's, we fix probably four or five a week.
All right, so bills to be approved, $26,014.26. What's the pledge of allegiance? Motion second to open the bills submitted. Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Will, Chisholm.
Yes.
Bobaski, yes.
Motion carries. Clerk's report, please.
We have some, if I can find them now. We have a thank you for a baby gift from Lucy Joachim and Michael.
Step, of course, these guys.
Yeah.
Granddaughter.
Granddaughter. One of those things, a onesie.
Yeah, a onesie that says "Future Oriole" on it. It's all grandparents or parents that have a baby, they get a little onesie that says "Future Oriole." They're really cute.
We have 57 Beanie Babies for ELC Oriole Way Awards from Ida.
Vicious.
Vicious.
Oh, yeah.
She was the principal at Tyson.
Tyson. The last thing rhymes with riches.
Those vintage?
I'm not sure. She had a, oh, she had a huge collection of many of them. Those are the ones that did make it to Texas, which you made.
And then lots of thanks to the FLC adoptive family and all of the supporters, which is up on the screen there. That is just a thank you. Help, that's just thank you, what they all can do. And then Fond du Lac Area Foundation, $650 FLC Artist in Residence Program towards that. That is all I have.
All right, thank you. Excited on the agenda, item H, the Student Council reporting.
My first semester ended last Thursday, starting the new semester in Thursday. So top 10 and other my Florida and will coming out soon. I think we're excited. So we're all waiting very recently.
Nervously.
Yeah. And then for Student Council, we are getting ready for our winter formal, which is next Saturday, the 4th. And along with that, we have a spirit week for like the paint house game, which is on Thursday. And then in March, on the 8th, is a Wednesday, we have Family Night, our annual Family Night. So that's open to all North Fond du Lac families from FLC to ELC. And then on the 6th of February, we have our senior class trip, and we're going skiing, tubing, snowboarding, and cat training.
Don't you have one more Student Council item to report on? Something new was received this weekend. Since you can't undo it, I'll do it.
Oh, yeah. Where are we, where are you going to college now?
I'm going to UWM.
We'll have to think of a different thing than an old soul blanket this year for the person going there, since she has Madison one already. Maybe a nice hat.
I'll make you come up with a better option.
That it? All right, thank you. At 7:13, I will open up the meeting for citizens' input. This is an opportunity for any citizens who wish to address the board. Hearing none, I will declare, I will declare the citizens' input portion of the meeting closed at 7:14.
7:14.
Brings us up to item J, super test report.
Thank you, Mr. Chisholm. Starting today, I'm very excited to introduce, if you've gotten information, we had a groundbreaking ceremony. Bob Nelson from KFIZ was out there. We should get some good press coming up, but what I want to do is I want to turn this over to Mike McDowell. We're fortunate to have Mike McDowell here. He's our Building Trades teacher, tech ed, extraordinary educator, along with Chris Cardinal. And there's a gentleman, Dave Mann, sitting in the middle. It's been a cooperative of our maintenance and construction, our maintenance crew, construction classes, the kindness of Mark Cardinal Construction under the leadership of Chris Cardinal, a village resident for a while there, still working as he's building new houses, and wanting to make sure that building trades continues to flourish. And I can tell you that currently, right now, with the North Fond du Lac Building Trades Cooperative, it's going to be better than it ever was, and this will be the design of what all schools are going to want to be part of. So I'll turn it over to Mike, and if you want to introduce Chris and tell a little bit about the journey, and then give you an opportunity, Chris, to kind of tell a little bit of why you wanted to get into this, and what we can expect from you, and what you expect from us.
First of all, it's like, you know, like Dave and I, how we never cross, we cross paths in the past, because all the people that he knows, I know, and back and forth. But Dave, and so he's sitting in the middle, got us, got us together. And I'll let Chris talk about from his aspect. But given an opportunity to be involved in the Building Trades Program, be involved in being the tech ed teacher, you know, has breathed new life in myself as well, as far as education is concerned. Today, you know, I could tell right off the bat, the kids that were out there and the anticipation, you know, I saw a few of them on the basketball team in the hallway, hey, are we going to, we're going to go see them big tomorrow? Or, you know, I mean, they're so jazzed up right now. To see some of them step forward and personally thanking the members that are involved in what's taking place, I mean, there's just a heightened sense of awareness of what they need to do, and their, their game is ready. You know, you can do these things in a lab, and you can talk about it, but getting out and getting to the real life perspective is going to be paramount to their education and given an opportunity to move forward. So Dave put us together, it was two years ago, we met at an undisclosed location, and so we had Cardinal Concrete, Smith Builders, and then Drexel. And getting together, we just kind of laid out some of the things that we were going to do, and what was going to be coming together. And this fall, it just wasn't able to fall in. Chris was so busy, Chris Smith was so busy, both of them were in needed people, which I'm telling the kids right now, this is an opportunity. I mean, as soon as you start working, you're applying for a multitude of jobs that you can be involved in, from plumbing to electrical to HVAC, to drywall, to general construction, to concrete work. You're going to be able to see all facets of the building process and get an opportunity to meet the people that are part of or the head of these companies that we have, not only in our community, in our greater community. And so it's a great opportunity. I'm, you know, very, very pleased. I'm excited for this program to be taken off.
I'm following up with Mike, you know, it's been, I, a little history of it, you know, we all met a couple of years ago here, got things going forward. I went through the program in 2004 as a co-op. I went to Springs and came over and ate lunch at my grandparents', you know, worked at the class the afternoon. So I mean, the class really helped, you know, bring a different dynamic, and from there I went to school at Circuit Drive Management. So it was nice. It propelled you in the classroom to have that hands-on experience. That's something I've always valued, especially being in the contracting world now. And it's always something that's been a passion of mine, is to help kids get that upper foot, because here's a great program of you guys, where these students are ultimately getting the same thing you could get in a tech program, what offered in high school, you know, and that's huge to be, hit the ground running at 18, you know, and that's, that speaks volumes. So I guess this is just, we've worked on this a long time, and we've done, you know, college service trips, you know, building, and there was just never a complete platform where we had the, you guys on your side of the table. So I mean, this is going to be, hopefully, the new template of what's the future to bring. So I'm really excited and it'll be fun.
Give you a little background too. Chris helped with FPTC getting their program going, which didn't really make it, the interest of people wanting to get into it, then moved to West Bend and then died. Fond du Lac has a different model where they're building the construction, like a building where construction will go on inside that building. Our model is a little different, instead of like a big blue whale, we're like sardines. We've got three major partners, Chris Cardinal from Mark Cardinal Construction, Smith Builders, Chris Smith was out there, we'll probably see Todd Smith out there also. And then also Drexel Buildings applied. They supply happiness, or actually, that's what their motto is, they're built on happiness principles also. And they've done, and actually, Doug was partners, partnered up with Drexel for one of the community meet things, and he said, you got to see this guy, because they run their company, how we try to run our school, based on happiness. And Drexel's also looking at getting us a trailer, tools, we're going to have, it's going to be like NASCAR for crying out loud. We're going to have these stickers and all these. Aherd Gross was represented in there today. The village has given that land, which is right on that corner, so that it can be built on. It's going to be the nicest house in that community. And financially, a couple of years ago, I told you that Oriole Realty is out of business, because we can't foot this project. We don't have the expertise, or the time, or the ability, but Mike sure knows how to manage students and help teach and coordinate those communities. So now with Chris and Chris and Doug Carlson and Joe Fleischman from Drexel, and then all the other subs, this is going to be an incredible thing. And this is just the first. We're looking at many other projects down the line, need on school grounds, be it on a different area in the village. I even was telling Chris today, Chris Smith, I think you had to leave, I say, hey, we own some land on the backside Oriole Athletic Complex. We could probably subdivision that maybe in time, and maybe have, maybe four houses back there. You never know. Could have a lot of different things. But this is just the beginning of a great, the only thing we're invested in is, is Mike and his expertise, being the teacher, and from here, we're looking at a ton of things that can happen. And I just want to thank Chris and Mark Cardinal Construction. He's been the driving force behind this, and just really, really appreciate you looking to us and taking the time and investing in us. We won't let you down. Really appreciate it.
And hopefully, I'm not speaking out of turn here, but when we met the last time that we met, and I think it's important to know here as well, is not only are these kids going to give the experience, but Chris's parents had put up for this home to be built, that the proceeds, the profit is going to all come back to the construction program. So it's not a spec house that's being built to be sold, and which what I would be totally fine with. But so talking with Drexel today, and Carlson, he talked about getting, making sure all the kids have, have the appropriate tools when they come, and what Chris had suggested that they would need, and being able to facilitate some of those other items as well. So it is truly a win-win, and I'm just very appreciative of our, of our community people who getting involved in helping in this program.
And I can guarantee our numbers will go up, because of the real hands-on and what Mike's going to bring with Chris working on it. So it is, it's a fishbowl. That's a cool state. If you walk, everybody will see it, it's a prey to, it's a prey to homes. So a junior will be one of them that's on the prey to home. So everybody looking at houses is going to be going through and seeing what the Horace Mann High School students are doing. So not the cooperative of Fond du Lac, the Horace Mann High School students, working with Mark Cardinal Construction, Smith Builders, Drexel, a bunch of them. So thank you. Do you guys have any questions of Chris or Mike?
I'm just curious, more than anything, but what type of plan do you have, or else?
Oh!
I want my bath.
Now tell them about it.
It's a three-bedroom, two-bathroom, with the off, with a master bathroom with it, and you can see the full bath that's on there. It's a ranch-style type of home. So the garage will actually be facing on McKinley. Right now, there, there's an excavator, a high hole that's down there that's started to scrape off and get everything set up for sewer, and that hook up, they'll cut in tomorrow where the driveway's going to come in, and then they'll start doing, and the basement, and getting the basement done, and taking care of there. It'll be a vinyl siding exterior, traditional, have the chingles out there, and that's it. And I don't think there's any, from what I gather, there'll be like a 19-foot set off of both McKinley and then Michigan for that aspect of it. And, you know, just so it's up front and everything, everybody's had an opportunity to be involved in the program. So nobody's being excluded, you know, from our community, our village and that, those people that might say, well, everybody was given an opportunity to put some bits in on the, on the program. And at the end of the day, you know, you know, like when you build a house and you want to sell it, you do what you can to make sure that at the end of the day, you're still going to make some money as well. So everybody had an opportunity to be involved in that, to be involved in the process.
And the neat thing is, it's not, it's, we work with this, those Cardinal, they, Cardinal Smiths still have, still control that, and they have subs they've worked with, they've worked through a bidding process, so there is no conflict of anything. Plus, I want to throw, we're, Flood for Flood Homes are also going to be involved also with helping out in different ways, where our partnership with Flood Homes is starting to grow. They're at 98% capacity right now. They're not going to continually build it. And a lot of that, he will say, has to do with the school district, and people will be able to afford the horrible housing that they have. So there's a lot of hands in this sucker, and it's going to be great.
So one thing to, just adding to it is, I went to the village a year ago, and like this lot was an undeveloped lot that had ultimately no interest. So that's kind of what, when I pitched this to the village, is kind of, this is a community project, where we're taking lots that aren't necessarily attractive to the average home, you know, the lot purchaser. Because anybody who will build out a brand-new lot is a group like us that's going to make it better. So I guess that's one thing that I want, you know, I'd like to keep that relationship strong, because I'm, if I'm unaware, there's not any other community project like that, you know, that's our definite involvement, so that's pretty cool.
And it could be, like, this house goes up, I think it's going to generate other people, and we're going to talk to the village about possibly giving some sort of incentives for other people to maybe up their curb appeal and do some other things. So it's, just, this is just a start.
Just out of curiosity, did we do any kind of outreach or communication with any of the neighbors there? Did you get any sense of what they think?
This is Cardinal instant. So this has nothing to do, it's a lot, just like anybody else would buy that lot and go. So this, and this is very different than the Florida house, where we had with Clarity Care. That was something where we were involved from the get-go. I did a lot of negotiating with the village and stuff. This is totally different, so that'll be, it'll do nothing but against that area.
That's a lot that they took the whole stone that was beyond repair a few years ago.
Right, I recall, I just was wondering if, you know, the community, the people surrounding get into this, are they excited there?
I know one of the neighbors, he was, he's ex-dag for, just to get a new, fresh property in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And he lives on the corner of Minnesota and in there, so. And then on the timeline, I see that March 24th through the 26th, the Home Builders Show. Are you anticipating having it completed by then?
We'll be involved in the Home Builders, so we'll actually have our own booth as the Building Trades School. So we'll be there if anybody has any questions for us, give the kids an opportunity to mingle with some other people, make different connections as well. June is then when you, the Prey to Homes will be taking place there. So that's, that's the timeline in that fashion.
I just think it's great, I mean, it's a lot of, I think, extra stuff that you guys are doing to contribute to this, and I mean, that's the way our district is going, so I'm excited that you guys are active.
I think it's a great program, because you're building the base of kids that may want to go into the trades, and you know it. And I see it at my company, is that the kids that know what any screwdriver hold are kind of a rapidly declining population, and there's really a shortage of technical, gives us technical aptitudes, and so I think it's, I think it's a wonderful program. Just not everybody's going to college.
You know, and along that, and the things I tell the kids as well, even, even if it's, even if you don't end up going into the trades, and maybe it's something that you go to school for, and construction management or something else maybe affiliated with it, to be able to know how to build your own home, and when they do that, or to put out an addition, it is invaluable as well.
Just to maintain your home.
And so we're doing it as kind of a mentor-mentee. We've got some juniors and some seniors in the next year. In the fall, those juniors will be seniors, and then they can kind of act as mentors, they'll already have, you know, one step into that process, moving forward on their second home. So to be able to graduate and be in two home builds will speak volumes as well.
I think that's a good opportunity for kids to find out, maybe why they shouldn't consider going to school, maybe they don't just want to do the labor part of it, maybe they want to know more about the technical things, and that might help them get an understanding of what kind of programs to go into, or why.
What struck me, Chris, is to learn that you're a former student, former part of our program, and you're willing to come back and make it grow, make it better, and that's really cool.
We went to, we went to the DOT project, and Sam has been great about getting us the buses, and once a month, I take kids to different venues to take them inside wherever work, wherever the place are. So we've been, we've been as far down as the Mac, we've been to La Mirada Quad, but we went to the DOT project down there and talked about past students. So we're there, and I can't make this stuff up. We get in there, and the superintendent from JFAherd that's running the job down there is a graduate of Horace Mann High School, and he's running the job. So he tells these kids, he said, hey, I went through the program, I can't even believe you guys get out, we never got to do something cool. And I looked at the kids, I said, I don't even know this guy. And of course, I got my wallet out afterwards. And then Dave Suppley is the superintendent for Smith Construction. His kids go to school in the district, and he said, you know, I was that wary kid going to school, and, you know, I just, I love to work with my hands, and, you know, when I get an opportunity, he goes, you know, I got a nice house, I have an outbuilding, I got all my toys, and I said, it's paid for, being able to do something like this. So having, you know, he talks about initiative and things like that. So those are some of the things that will help the kids moving forward.
Excellent. We'll give you updates on that anytime. You know, just be safe, walk out there, check things out, it's a working zone, maybe get a hard hat on, but go out there right on the corner of Michigan and McKinley Boots. Cool. All right, thank you very much if you want to cruise home, moving and other stuff, so. All right, thanks a lot, Chris, appreciate it. All right, moving on, Act 55 notifications, I included that, that's just another, that's from the budget bill from the last biennial, that says we have to tell people those other options, where our report card is, that virtual schools exist, and tell them where they can go find that. So that was published last Friday, so that's just an update that we did that. And then the half-mat, that's a Happiness Matters team, its strategic plan, I'll just show you that really quick, because we're going to come back to that at the beginning of the year, next year. But the big thing about that is we want to make sure that we continually invest and hold ourselves accountable to utilize the idea of happiness being a piece of technology. So I got together with Jill Gable, Jim Nolan, Mike Gonzalez, Kurt Wisber, Karen Hoff, and myself, and what we did is we developed this, and really what the hap, it's, we're trying to go like hap, what's a half-mat? So it's Happiness Matters. Our goals are to be accountable for happiness, how we operationalize it, then also public relations. So you're going to see the website, how we do press conferences, how we put out press releases, that's all going to be part of this group. And I guess the biggest thing that I could show you is right here. This is North Fond du Lac, the happiness, how we're operationalizing it, is the staff, students, community. So what I'll recommend, and we'll talk with the board, but we've talked with teachers and staff already, we have a vision statement and a mission statement. I'll give anybody in this room 50 bucks if you could tell me the mission or vision statement right now. Now, I'll let people, I won't give anybody anything except for a high five, but can you tell us what our motto is?
For the success of all.
Which really ties it all together. We work together for the success of everybody, not just the ones that are easy, and we don't work separately in a silo and not help out. That's everything, from maintenance to education to busing to, to food service. So our, our idea is, let's get rid of everything except for our mission. That's what it is. We work together for the success of all, and our goal is to create, maintain, and grow a happy culture. And what do we mean by happy? Happy means three things. Students are college, career, and life-ready. And those are the different things that we're going to look at, of how we can measure school success, are you career-ready, college-ready, and life-ready? Because you're not happy unless you're successful, so that's a very big key. The environment allows people the ability to strive for their potential, like Sean Aker says, that joy one feels, and also that staff and students believe that what they do and how they think matters. So when people say, what is your job in the school district of North Fond du Lac? It's to create, maintain, and grow a happy culture. What does that mean? We have these three hallmarks. And then how do we carry out these three hallmarks? As we invest in students, staff, and community. And that's where you can start to see the rest of it grow, and where all the rest of the stuff's going to fall in. So the reality, what this half-mat team has come, has really become, we have a curriculum guide, we have technology and policies, this is our, this is our culture handle. So regardless if it's Aaron Sadoff, Doug Forsyth, Steve Hock, Paige Sadoff, Adam Broton, Mary Schultz, whoever it is, you can come in and have ideas, but just as they said, when Southwest CEO retired, they, this new person came, and they said, so what do you think about your new CEO? And one of the employees says, we'll tolerate him. He said, what do you mean? You can't talk like that about your CEO. No, we're tolerating him, as long as he doesn't mess with their culture and lets us function, he'll be fine. And that's what we need to do, because we're starting to see how this happiness works, and it's, and that's, and we're operationalizing it. So that's what the half-mat team is, and our goal is by the board convention next year, to really have this operationalized, from having orange frog training for all ninth graders, just some this spring, then in the fall, for every ninth grader and sixth grader. think about your new CEO? And one of the employees says, we'll tolerate him. He said, what do you mean? You can't talk like that about your CEO. No, we're tolerating him as long as he doesn't mess with their culture and lets us function, he'll be fine. And that's what we need to do because we're starting to see how this happiness works and that's, we're operationalizing it. So that's what the Hatmat team is. And our goal is by the board convention next year to really have this operationalized from having orange frog training for all ninth graders, just some this spring, then in the fall for every ninth grader and sixth grader, so we'll have everybody orange frog trained, similar to what we did as a staff, to how we're gonna do, for instance, if you guys want, we're having a press conference screen coming, you know, like when you go to a convention and you pull up those screens, well, like when the Packers, let's talk about how the Falcons had a press conference yesterday, that's probably a happier one, as they might have like associative bank and all the different symbols, well, we're gonna have a press conference screen that has Oriole Nation, school district, North Fond du Lac. So when we interview like today, we can put that behind Paige, could interview Paige and she could take a hat, put it on, have like lacrosse, hockey and Madison, and put it on to Madison today. Paige Sadoff has decided to take her talents and significant amounts of money and investment in the University of Wisconsin Madison. So, so we're gonna try to really play off of what happy means and continue to invest in. This is the team that's gonna keep it going. So that's our Hatmat team. And I challenged everybody to reach out to somebody, call them, talk to them, whatever, have to show some gratitude. And Carrie Jo, I want to thank you for starting that stream. It's really starting to fill up. I'll reply to one and have the board on it, but it's once again, if somebody reaches out, tells somebody they appreciate them, haven't seen them a while, you get the response, you start to realize the stuff. That's what matters. So that's a Hatmat team and happiness, this is a flash in the pan and I want to thank you again, it was just over a year ago, you entrusted me to go out to California and get orange frog trained and we're starting to see this really go.
Yeah.
I was telling Aaron this today, but I was in a meeting on CSA 6 last week and a couple districts were talking about this happiness advantage and
Oh, they heard about it.
Also the people at CSA had asked me, oh, I know your district's doing that, we're starting to learn about Sean Aker too at CSA 6 and they had some questions for me and so, okay, we might have more people wanting to come and check it out and say, yeah, we have a trainer here and we'd be happy to share with you what we're doing, but it's kinda
Yeah, it has about time, but.
Yeah.
We have 425 books, ITL, the Fond du Lac Gary Foundation, the district, they're going home, I believe it's the first week in February, working on a reading guide, so it's three chapters in one week and then two more, two more, two more. So all families are getting an orange frog book with a reading guide and they're gonna read it as a family for literacy and happiness, so that's never happened anywhere, so we're the first ones for that. And it's, it's pretty neat. We have a guy named Mike from Mattel for Kids, Dave also are doing orange frog stuff, he'll be coming up and visiting us again soon. We have Schaumburg, Illinois, is looking at investing significant amounts of money, that's pretty affluent area around Illinois, they're calling it Happy Schaumburg. And I think our district's gonna have a significant role in rolling that out and supporting them down there, almost like how we would for PLCs, how people come here for happiness, you know, two, four can turn it around, no one else. Some exciting things, but the bottom line is open enrollments up, discipline's down, our total enrollment's up, we're looking at a lot of positive vibes, going to a referendum for almost $30 million. And all that doesn't happen just because, I think, a ton of it has to do with their attitude and how we go about doing business. You guys agree? And just one side note, so we're going to the board convention and we're gonna take Oriole two yesterday, last week. Well, what I do know is that we have somebody who's in charge of the vehicle fleet, she's a, she's the queen of vehicle fleet, so, but she had heard that we were gonna go, her name is Mary, and I won't say her last name, but she made sure that the vehicles are all clean. And so Dave and I, Mary are going down there and they're telling the story how she thought it was vehicle one, so she really meticulously cleaned vehicle one first and then two, but they're always very clean. And she does an excellent job of that and the pride that Mary shows. I mean, just Mary coming to our board meetings, part of the committee for facilities, I just, she epitomizes what the orange frog's about, and I really hit it.
Yeah, Mary.
(applause). Mary. All right. Anything else happiness-wise? Do you take happiness serious?
Are you considering doing a happiness breakout at the convention next year?
Yeah. We're gonna figure it out. Bet me we'll get you on Aker to come and speak. Yeah. Breathe a little life in that convention.
If you want.
We'll see. We're up there with our
Don't forget her happiness hall.
Happiness hall, yes.
Happiness hall now in front of you, so.
With rings.
Rings and gratitudes and
Patrick Flanagan, Patrick Flanagan, sixth grade teacher, went over and visited with his daughter, thinking about coming in, hey Mike, thinking about bringing his child here. He came and he told me last week, he says, Aaron, I went over there, he goes, yeah, I know there's a ton of kids, I know it's crazy, he says, I just need, but you feel it, they just care. Says, that one woman told my wife that she's coming. It's just, it's gonna happen. So, no, so I mean, that's some neat things that has to do with our culture, and that culture will turn into increased achievement and growth. We actually have, who's coming on Thursday?
Clintonville.
Clintonville Middle School.
And why are they coming, Mike?
They're coming because they are a district that has similar demographics to us and they want to know how, what we did to have our students improve on the state report card over the past few years. So they want to kind of pick our brain and observe our classes and see what we're doing in that aspect.
And we're presenting, a group of middle school staff are presenting at the middle school, high school principals convention in a couple weeks, so we'll get kind of word out about some of the things happening in that building. I suspect more people might want to come and take a visit, so. Can I also plug our elementary school? I know they've been asked by the DPI to share with the whole state of Wisconsin just some professional development that they've been a part of and how it's impacted their work here in the district, so I'm gonna finalize that and see if that will come to fruition, that would be 30th, they would share with the whole state of Wisconsin via webinar, so. Some cool stuff going on.
Plus, next, next year, Mike and Chris Cardinal and Chris Smith will probably have to go down and present, because there was actually one down on building trades.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, and just since we're just smothering ourselves into love, I believe Stevens Point Area High School is either, it's in the top five for how many kids go there. I just want to let you know that a wrestling team beat them this weekend in a tournament, along with the Green Bay United, which if I'm correct, that's every Green Bay school united together, or a couple of them.
All but one.
All but one. So, and took second up at the period, so just dominated. So, well, but bottom line is what we're trying to do is make it so it makes sense. And how about this, how about if we take Springs kids, WLA kids for cap classes, building classes, tech ed, and what we do is we charge them one seventh a kid. So the money that goes there actually comes back, saves that money, gets these kids great opportunities, they can still play for the sports and the teams. So we're looking at doing some things that actually make sense and would work out and help everybody out. The third one is school accountability. Check this out, this is right up our alley. Ironically, people have heard about college and career ready now too. Adam, can you believe that? We were talking about that for a while. But if you look at this report card, this looks a lot different than what we have right now. Instead of just having, you know, reading and math and graduation, like career readiness, here it looks at attendance, community service, our workplace learning experience. So we could see our numbers go up greatly there, that would have an impact, so we would get measured for the things that we do. So this is just an idea of what Elbrooks would look like. And you can see Elbrook, work, learning, experience, 5%. If you look at what we would have, we would have quite a bit more. You look at advanced placement exams, we don't really have any of those, well, we have a few, but we have more of our cap courses. So this would just be a different way of measuring different things. And Samantha, ACP and all of our counselors are actually working with Adam too to have this all an edge and climber. So next, at the end of this year, not only will you get a report of who's graduating, but you will get a report of how many of our kids are career and college ready. And then when a parent says, well, Mike, it's not career ready, we can say, well, what do you, what should they do to be career ready? Well, their attendance needs to get better, they need to have, start volunteering, they should have workplace experience if they have a job, they should take a class, get an industry credential. Are they involved in sports or clubs? Because if they're involved in two or more, that shows that they're career ready. So these are things that will actually measure stuff that's beyond just literacy and literacy, although those are important also, but it measures more. So that, so this group is advocating for this, to be part of the new report card, if we can do that, ESSA wants us to do that stuff. And then priority five, teacher pipeline, this has got a lot of stuff to it. Do you know that it costs more money for a teacher to go to UW, for a student to go to UW Madison to be a teacher than a mechanical engineer? There's actually 20 more credits to become an educator at Madison than become a mechanical engineer.
30.
30. So it costs, excuse me, 30, so it costs more. And you're looking at student, student teaching, you have to pay while you're student teaching. We're looking at saying, hey, you don't pay money while you're student teach, you actually get paid. Looking at getting rid of all these different loop, or all the different loops you have to jump through for internships, where if we have somebody who knows quality, I can think of Sam, somebody who, a student that could come in to an intern, they get paid, they teach a class, we know that they'll be also observed, but they can do a lot, which would help a teacher sort of. So this is looking at that. And those are it. So those are the, those are all things that North Fond du Lac, since you guys allowed me to be part of this group, that I'll ask you to pass a resolution that says you support these things. Is there anything that, guys have questions on them or things that you think like, hmm? No, one thing is SAA probably won't endorse this because SAA has to support 427 school districts and school boards and business managers, and that's kind of where the rub is, this isn't everybody, but everybody can be part of it, so. So this is, all right? All right, so moving on, Facility Update Committee, doing good there. We had that meeting last Wednesday, no, Tuesday, Tuesday, which was the third time was a charm. And boy, that went really well. We're working on, now what's gonna happen after tonight, the vote on the referendum questions and the authorization to go to referendum. What we're gonna do is I will set in mid-February, I'm gonna call it a referendum fair, we'll have Bill Foster come up from School Perceptions, we'll have Clint and Matt come from Bray, we'll have some other, whoever's important will come in, so that everybody will hear what this is, we'll have all the pieces of paper, all the plans, all that kind of stuff, so when we go out and we start sharing, we have all the right information. Also, you guys went to some referendum in Hudson, how many meetings did they have in six weeks?
140, separate events.
Okay, and then the smaller school district, what was another one there?
Muskego.
Muskego.
Muskego, Norwex, 78.
They have like 60, yeah, something like that.
78.
So if you, so what we're gonna do is set that up, and I just want to show you this, I already have some ideas. And All right, so I'm already looking at scheduling some meetings for the village in North Fond du Lac, March 20th, which is a normal meeting for you guys, right? Mike and Mike?
It is first Monday.
Yep, it is. Yep, so I'm gonna talk to Chuck, get on there and tell about the referendum at that meeting, possible friendship Thursday, March 9th, I got the contact information. Get on theirs, I don't know if it's just more people that show up there, but we should get out there and let people know. The Town of Fond du Lac, theirs would be March 13th, a Monday, I got the contacts and we'll go there. Town of Eldorado, you know Eldorado and Lamartine have very few people that live in those districts. I think reaching out and letting them know, maybe setting that bar for what Rosendale or what Ripon or what Fond du Lac should do when they go to that, I think that, just getting that information out, even if it isn't to just the voters, so that people know what we're saying and what we're doing. And then North Fond du Lac, Optimists, I'll be in touch with Optimists and get on their agenda. Bob Ozeen, and then presentation, I'll talk to Ken. I think we could set some stuff up at church on Sundays after church is over. Youth basketball, youth softball, youth baseball, I'll talk to Eric Flood at Flood Homes. Basketball games, movies, Edgewood Community Church, open houses, think of a place in Van Dyne, maybe cool again, so we could shut up, set up, have some pizza, and talk to some people out there. Wentz, Lanes, Lake Air, I'm gonna start to set up some things and it's not just gonna be Aaron Sadoff, but different groups can go and talk. So I think
Senior Senate.
Senior Senate?
Yes.
Cool, I'll add that. So, yeah, so that's just, you know, and then we'll have open houses and show people stuff, but the whole idea is that, you know, Mohammed and I have come about, we're gonna go to the people. This should be something that, we're gonna set these things up, be sure they came and saw, we're gonna go, let them know because we want people informed, we want to know why we're doing, what we're doing, how it's gonna impact them financially, but also as a community. So that's kind of what the plan is right now. This gets passed tonight, after that, then I talk with Matt and Clint, we get, we get their PR places going and rocking, and then we have that meeting, that fair if you will, and then from there we start to go out and share, and all have the same information. What I want to do too, I'll sit around this, is I have, we're gonna talk when we get to the body. Also, I want to give all the board this, and also since we have employees here, that's awesome too. All right, so the biggest thing is with referendum is that we can't, as, as the Board of Education, if you would go to the second page, or part two, which is on like the third or fourth page. I think it'd be more by the way. Let Sadoff come in, my borrow your stack. Maybe speak freely. So if you look at the There's actually twenty more credits to become an educator at Madison than become a mechanical engineer.
Thirty.
Thirty. So it costs, excuse me, so it costs more. And you're looking at student, student teaching, you have to pay while you're student teaching. We're looking at saying, hey, you don't pay money while you student teach, you actually get paid. Looking at getting rid of all these different loop, or all the different loops you have to jump through for internships, where if we have somebody who knows quality, I can think of Sam, somebody who, a student that could come in, do an intern, they get paid, they teach a class, we know that they'll be also observed, but they can do a lot, which would help a teacher sort of. So, this is looking at that. And those are it? So those are the, those are all things that North Fond du Lac, since you guys allowed me to be part of this group, that I'll ask you to pass a resolution that says you support these things. Is there anything that, guys have questions on them, or things that you think like, hmm? Now, one thing is SAA probably won't endorse this, because SAA has to support four hundred and twenty-seven school districts and school boards and business managers, and that's kind of where the rub is, this isn't everybody, but everybody can be part of it, so. So this is, alright? Alright, so moving on, facility update committee, doing good there. We had that meeting last Wednesday, no, Tuesday, Tuesday, which was the third time was a charm. And, boy, that went really well. We're working on now what's gonna happen after tonight, the vote on the referendum questions and the authorization to go to referendum. What we're gonna do is, I will set in mid-February, I'm gonna call it a referendum fair, we'll have Bill Foster come up from school perceptions, we'll have Clint and Matt come from Bray, we'll have some other, whoever's important will come in, so that everybody will hear what this is, we'll have all the pieces of paper, all the plans, all that kind of stuff, so that we go out and we start sharing, we have all the right information. Also, you guys went to some referendum in Hudson, how many meetings did they have in six weeks?
Hundred and forty, separate events.
Okay, and then the smaller school district, what was another one then?
Muskego.
Muskego, normal, seven or eight.
Seven, like sixty, yeah.
Okay.
Seventy.
So if you, so what we're gonna do is set that up, and I just want to show you this, I already have some ideas. Alright, so I'm already looking at scheduling some meetings, the village in North Fond du Lac, March twentieth, which is a normal meeting for you guys, right? Mike and Mike?
It is first Monday.
Yep, it is. Yep, so I'm gonna talk to Chuck, get on there and tell about the referendum at that meeting, if possible. Friendship Thursday, March ninth, I got the contact information, get on theirs, I don't know if it's just more people that show up there, but we should get out there and let people know. The town of Fond du Lac, theirs would be March thirteenth, a Monday, I got the contacts and we'll go there. Town of Eldorado, even though Eldorado and La Martine have very few people that live in those districts, I think reaching out and letting them know, maybe setting that bar for what Rosendale, or what Ripon, or what Fond du Lac should do when they go to that, I think that, just giving that information out, even if it isn't to just the voters, so that people know what we're saying and what we're doing. And then North Fond du Lac, Optimists, I'll be in touch with Optimists and get on their agenda, Bob Bozine, and then presentation, I'll talk to Ken. I think we could set some stuff up at church on Sundays after church is over. Youth basketball, youth softball, youth baseball, I'll talk to Eric Flood at Flood Homes, basketball games, movies, Edgewood Community Church, open houses, think of a place in Van Dyne, maybe cool again, so we could shut up, set up, have some pizza, and I'll talk to some people out there. Wentz, Lanes, Lake Air. I'm gonna start to set up some things, and it's not just gonna be here and say it out, but different groups can go and talk. So I think...
Senior Senate.
Senior Senate? Cool, I'll add that. So, yeah, so that's just, you know, and then we'll have open houses and show people stuff, but the whole idea is that, you know, Mohammeda has come about, we're gonna go to the people. This shouldn't be something that, we're gonna set these things out, be sure they came and saw, we're gonna go, let them know, because we want people informed, we wanna know why we're doing, what we're doing, how it's gonna impact them financially, but also as a community. So, that's kind of what the plan is right now, this gets passed tonight, after that, then I talk with Matt and Clint, we get, we get their PR, place is going and rocking, and then we have that meeting, that fair, if you will, and then from there, we start to go out and share, all have the same information. What I wanna do, too, I'll sit around this, is I have, we're gonna talk when we hit to the body council, but I wanna give all the board this, and also, since we have employees here, that's awesome, too. Alright, so the biggest thing is, with referendum, is that we can't, as, as the Board of Education, if you would go to the second page, or the part two, which is on like the third or fourth page? Let's say enough, can I borrow your stack? They speak freely. So if you look at the second page, page three, 'cause they're front back, of ethical law regarding the rules of a board member and administration, board members may speak freely in favor or against a referendum. So all of you can have whatever you, if you're for, or if you think there's some things you should do or shouldn't do, going through the process, understanding things, the Board of Education is not tied to speak out for, for, or against, okay? So in the contrast that, the role that I play and employees of the district is, I for sure, I can give information. I can say this is reasons why, this is what we'll do, but I can't say vote for it or vote against it. As board members, you can. But also remember that you have a lot of weight and heft, and as you speak, you speak as an individual, but also you speak as a board, because you were one of five, but that just, and we'll make sure that when we go out and we share that, we don't have three board members going together, because then we would have a forum, so we have to be wary of that. But what, with the board members, it's really great, you guys will have that ability to, you know, speak honestly and freely about what you really believe, and I hope that as a district, we provided information, you feel that you have the information to speak honestly. And we also, as a district employees, can, it's just that we can't say vote for it or vote against it. Now, what also happens is, is different groups start to arise. So, what normally, and what could happen, is a parent, so let's say a parent like Renee, let's say hypothetically somebody named Renee, or let's say somebody named Jim, or Diane could come forward, and they would say, we wanna run a pro group, then they would be the ones that could go out and say, oh, yes, or however that would work. There could be another group that says, that could be our pound sand group, if you will, that says caves, caves if they are. Have you guys heard about caves? Citizens against virtually everything. So there could be another group that comes in force, whatever that is, we will be abashing of information, but our roles legally, and since you're elected officials, just be wary that you can say what you believe. You can say what you believe, for or against, and if you have any questions about information that will help you better articulate that stance, just let me know and I can get that information. And you guys are put it on the process, totally, all the way, so. Just wanna give you that. So as we look at our process, we are getting there. I mean, we, this is two and a half years culminating of work, and now tonight we set a question, then give it a couple weeks, get all of our data and information out, and then go share the word. Anybody have any questions about that? And if anybody has any questions, have you talked to counsel, have you talked to lawyers? Are your questions worded correctly? What I can tell you is, yes, yes, and over, yes, and yes. Matter of fact, where he is becoming a professional on what founding council is, and if you will see before anybody leaves here, if you would please, make sure that we sign everything that's in the folders that needs to be signed. I'm not sure who needs to sign them where, but there are definitely things that incorporate a lot of people, make sure it's all legal. We'll get this to Lisa Fryberg tomorrow, be good to go. Anybody have any questions, administrators?
I just, in my newsletter that I sent home for friendship, I did say that we would have an information table about the referendum for both of our conference nights.
Oh!
There you go.
There you are. And here, too, winter conference, are the same one? Winter, winter chicken dinner. That's got us four, nice.
Same thing, we can talk about who does this, but I knew that it couldn't be me, so...
Can be me.
But who could be you, could be committee, whoever it is.
Could be one of us.
Could be one of you guys.
Yeah.
I wonder if an eighteen-year-old student could get involved, really get active.
We might need her to help with the book fair, so just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call tips on Paige.
Alright, you guys, anybody else have any questions? If you see any committee members, just an excellent job, we have right now, the board's all been on the committee, where he has been on the committee, Debbie's been on the committee, Carrie Jones, the minister's been joining now, Mary's been on the committee, Dave's been on that committee, and they've done a lot, we've been together for two and a half years, and I think it's really been a great process, and I really appreciate all their input. And it definitely is not the way it started, I mean, it definitely has evolved and changed, and I think that's a, I think it's a great thing, we're on iteration like fifty-two, so it's alright. Alright, personnel update, we have a couple retirements, or retirement and re-retirement, we're gonna have some expanding of some roles in different areas, which I'll, I'll talk to a little bit more, but just tis the season for looking at hiring. We have nobody that, I've talked with the administration, that we're looking at non-renew or that's under needs improvement right now, so we'll continue to work with our new staff, been very happy with their new staff, our veteran staff has really done a great job, been asked a lot of them, I know Adam with his school improvement team, is we're doing things differently and getting groups together and really pushing them along, so hopefully with their, we're gonna have to look at possibly a split four or five, depending on how that looks in student number over at FLC, because we have a hundred and three students, we could have a hundred and ten in fifth grade or fourth grade next year, so just some different things. Alice retiring, looking at, we're gonna probably have to fill that with a full-time over there, but we have an idea for ALC. Tom Kaiser's retired, gonna work with Mike and Samantha, we know we're not gonna find an eighty percent tech ed, that'll have to be full-time, we'll figure out where that can work in, and now with Mike and building trades, we have project lead the way needs at middle school, so there'll be different things. Kurt, you're gonna look at the handbook, or the course selection book, Kurt and Doug, Adam, and who else went down to Illinois?
Dan Sitter.
Dan Sitter, they looked at something called incubator EDU, which is entrepreneurial, kind of like a project lead the way for marketing, business, and entrepreneurship, and the more I think that Kurt incubates on it, the more he feels that marketing might have to go, and that might have to be the way. That comes with a twenty-five thousand dollar price tag, but I think we can find that in the community for people, this, it's an amazing thing, so. There could be some changes, look at some staffing stuff, just wanna give you a heads up, also hourly wage, things are gonna be floating and doing, so. We brought Linda McCollum, is coming back to be a full-time aide, Michelle Kirk is now gonna be, she's gonna be an instructional aide instead of doing skills tutor, I think we have Kristi Zenga that's coming to the skills tutor, so, got a lot of moving parts and things happen. Anything else that you guys can think of, HR-wise? Over there? And also, if you know anybody who has a bachelor's degree that wants to get schools and teachers, student teacher, substitute teacher workshop coming up, and we could definitely use some, so. Alright.
Got a question?
Yes.
So, tech educators are scarcer than hen's teeth.
Oh, did you say scarcer than hen's teeth?
I did.
Excellent.
Clearly, you've never heard this before.
Who else has heard scarcer than hen's teeth?
Never heard it before.
So, my question is, is that even at full-time, is that gonna be a stretch to find somebody that wanna do that?
Yes.
Yes and no.
And no.
Because, you know, again, I think we are a school that people want to be at, so that really helps us. We also, you know, I know last year and previous years, you know, been in contact with the two colleges that, you know, have, you know, openings, and, you know, we get it, you know, but I think, again, with what we have to offer, you know, with Mike very clearly having a construction pathway, and we need that manufacturing pathway, we've got opportunities for a new teacher, or another teacher to come in and, you know, run classes like project lead the way, and just have some cool opportunities. I think we're at a huge advantage compared to some other schools who are looking for a tech ed teacher with none of those things, you know? Is it gonna be easy to find? No. But I do think, you know, once we get this posted, and Mike and I and Aaron kinda talk about, you know, a couple of things, you know, I've already kinda let a couple of people know, hey, this is coming, you know, schools, you know, just finishing that first semester as well, and graduates kinda looking, making decisions, we may have some other schools who are already, you know, thinking, hey, this isn't so great in my school, but, you know, it could be here.
And we could have another teacher that has also done things in construction like Mike, that might be looking. You know, when we look at that two point five million dollar referendum question, that, if that also passes, that's, some of that money's going into that area to refurbish that area, to, you know, to get some of the parts that we need, to put that old red door, and to put some more storage, to clean out some areas, so that's, I think, having probably one of the better, it's not gonna be the largest shop, but it's gonna be a very well-organized and nice shop for kids to learn about manufacturing and construction and engineering, so that'll be cool. Plus, to work with Mike McDowell. You know?
Come on, you're gonna have like twenty-five of them.
And Doug Forsythe, and Kurt Wismer, I mean, come on.
One team.
Ouch. You know?
Jill sometimes feeds them.
Yeah. Alright, we have talked a little bit about stuff already just tonight, but is there anybody from Dave Maria, or any of the board members that wanna speak about the board convention, or give any feedback on that?
Well, I have the delegate assembly stuff that you mentioned in the board, so I should go over that. It was interesting again this year. Can't get through it any year without at least one amendment to an amendment to the original resolution, but anyway, all of them passed as written except for four, and I'll just do those real quick without getting too detailed. Seventeen oh three was the one about commencement of the school term, where the K-eight districts wanted to see if they could start earlier because their students don't work in the Dells during the summer and that kind of thing, which was a little illogical, as I mentioned last month, to me anyway, but it immediately had an amendment to, they just make it K-12 and let us decide when it would be best again to go to.
I'm starting on that, just one second, if you want, Mike Ritchie's the superintendent of Norland Pines, Eagle River, and when he gets something such as CRO, like you're going towards the hen's teeth type of analogies here, he really goes with it, and right now, one of his conservative Republican representatives, assemblyman up there says, nobody wants this state changed, they don't care when they go to school or start, he goes, oh, yeah, so he says he's gonna give them a hundred letters, so would it be okay if I wrote a letter that we would support changing, to let people start whenever they wanna start, even if that's before the first, is that okay with everybody? Okay, cool, so then I'll write a letter that he'll get off my back, that we are supporting that, too, he'll be able to give one of those hundred resolutions or letters to North, that had North Fond du Lac on it, says, yeah, and let us do what we need to. Cool. Fond du Lac could change.
Sure. They did mention there was some softening of that, that the tourism industry is maybe as in as strong or as tight with the governor as in past years when it was originally passed, so. Seventeen oh seven, narrowing disparities in allowable revenue limit, which basically was allowing districts, it was asking for a hundred dollars above your revenue cap that per pupil, that you could do without going to referendum, and it was amended to four hundred dollars in that pass. They didn't seem to be too excited about that passing at all, anyway. Seventeen twelve, mental health supports, was just a thing, it was amendment, amended to drop the language that made it kind of optional for districts, that it felt, some people felt strongly about that, some districts, and wanted to make it more of a, you should do this type of thing. Seventeen thirteen, sparsity aid, this was one of those with several different amendments, and in the end, all it did was change a word in the line from should to will, and that's basically was asking for more money for sparsity aid. And while that, it was protecting those who have it now. If we, if they open it up for some more districts qualify, they didn't wanna share the pot with those, so they're asking for more money for the new districts that would qualify. And then the last one, gender identity, it was just a resolution where the WSB would encourage districts to continually review their policies on gender identity issues, wasn't taking a stand really on anything, but it was voted down because some people were concerned, some districts, I should say, were concerned about WSB telling districts what we should be doing or not doing as far as policy, which, again, didn't make sense because that's what this is all about, is a policy that we either support or don't, so. It was turned down, and I was a little concerned that it would look like the WSB was trying to take a stand against, you know, positive gender identity things, but, but it was only because of that, just that they didn't wanna be told that we have to do that. So that was all on those, I don't know if we wanna keep it to any of the breakout session stuff, I did take some notes, though, that I think, and some of you were in the same session that I were, so I just want to go through that real quick. Two of them were the Hudson and Muskego referendum things, both of them are ahead of us by a little bit, one had the referendum last April, and the other one just had one in November. They, so most of that, what they talked about, we've been through already, because we're just getting to like the stage four, if you will, but there were some helpful things and suggestions, a lot of it validated things we've done already. One key point quote that I liked was, those affected by the decision have a right to be part of the decision, it's very, very important, I think, which, another one which we know we must do what the survey says we should do. If you start wandering off, that's when you start to get in trouble with it not passing. And Aaron you just mentioned, as previously, go to the people and don't ask them to come to us, go to your citizens and explain what we wanna do and why, and make the effort to get out there and show them that we really wanna inform them. Newsletters after the vote, all the way through until the doors open on the dedications day. Print newsletters, print stuff is very important, it says, people who aren't, don't have kids in school or aren't engaged in some reason in school seldom have reason to go to the school district's website, so, don't just put stuff on the website, it said. Also, keep in mind, the surveys are solid and statistically based, but non-supporters of referents tend not to do surveys, for some reason. And both of these districts used Bray, who we're using, and both highly praised. And then another one from Muskego, they did videos, a lot of videos, to show the story and get it out there, put it on the website, take it perhaps to the meetings that you have to show and explain, and I think with, especially with our video capabilities, with our teachers and students that we've been, you know, I think a step ahead of a lot of districts, that might be a good source to tap on that, so. And then the other one, real quick, legislative update, I went to that one, governor's looking at increasing, well, what he says is significant increases in aid to school, public schools, the lobbyists for WSB said that's because now he's running, or preparing to run for governor, whereas last budget cycle, he was preparing to run for president, and he needed to get out there with something that would show the nation how tough he was on public schools and unions and stuff like that. Now that he's back here and just looking to be governor again.